Buddy, it is seven o'clock and so we will call this meeting to order and we will lead off with our pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, I would like to thank you all for braving the cold. Uh, we were just talking to Ricky and that Arctic blast has made it all the way to Alabama and they're expecting snow. So anyway, thank you all for coming out. Uh, we have in attendance tonight, we have Jerry Garrettson, Ramon Reed, myself, Tom Gibb, and on Zoom, we have Ed Pinalto and our town clerk Sarah is here. And we have a bit of an audience, so it should be a good evening. And, uh, I doesn't appear to be we'll have an overly difficult time this evening, so let's just enjoy ourselves and get on with it. Do we have any public comments, Sarah? Okay, no public comments. Do we have an attorney online or reporting?
I do not believe that we are expecting a report from him tonight, so we can probably just move on.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this time, we get to approve minutes uh, for several, uh, work sessions and meetings. We get to, uh, approve the minutes for the December fifth, uh, work session, the December eleventh special meeting, and the December sixteenth regular meeting. Um, I will say the December eleventh meeting is kind of a real easy one, so, uh, I'm not different to the others. So did anybody else read through the others, have anything they wanted to add or, or, um, fix? We'll start with, uh, December five.
Which, which one?
December five.
Um, the only thing I have is at the very bottom, just up from the bottom, says Pete requested, uh, and committee, I put Pete Olson, his last name, request, requested instead of requesting a committee.
Oh, Pete was requested? What are we gonna put there? What did you say?
Pete Olson requested a committee.
For purchasing policy. Does that suit?
That's all I have.
Jerry, you have anything?
No.
All right. We will, we will move on to the next one. Will this approve them all at once or not, whichever way things go? So the next one will be our little short December eleventh, um, public hearing on the budget, and, um, you will notice that was a rather short meeting. Meeting adjourned at seven ten, so in those few minutes, you see anything on there that, uh, is out of order?
Yes, um, under, after, number one, after Mayor Protim come, come give, um, I put trustees Pinalto and Reed present. And then, uh, since you didn't get connected till after the public hearing, I would, would move that second sentence for Steve Garrison, going to meeting at six forty-nine down to right below, public hearing was closed.
So you want that to be in the minutes, in the order that it happened, rather than at the top, is that what you're requesting?
Yes. To me, it's
Right, so that was six thirty-nine, the chair succeeded in jo- in, in joining? Okay.
That's all I have on the eleven.
All right. A regular December sixteen, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Um, I, at the, in the very bottom paragraph on the first page, second line says, they requested a zero foot. I would actually spell that out, that it is numeral zero and a apostrophe, but the word zero and foot. Set back. That's just, just for clarity. On page two, the first, the, the top, the second line, it, the sentence starts with the, the driving surface. I think it should be drivable surface. Driving surface, it doesn't really, oh, plain straight to me. I assume that's what it meant, right, is the drivable surface, that's basically flat area. Um, then in the fourth paragraph.
Page please. Page two still?
Yes, page two, still. Um, after, yeah, at, at the end of their paragraph, because it really doesn't say what I brought up, I would like to add the sentence, trustee Reed stated, I can't read my own writing. Um, oh, trustee Reed stated that this variance request is within the purview of the zoning board.
And where do you want that in the first sentence?
Yeah, at the end of the first sentence, the second sentence. Or at the end of the first paragraph.
Okay.
Um, near the bottom of that page, the third paragraph up says Ed Pinalto asked if both Tom and himself would still need to go through the process of securing signatures like a normal election. And I believe at that time, the clerk responded in the affirmative, and I think it should say then.
Mr. Pinalto, you following along here with us?
I am.
All right.
Can't read my own writing. Sorry. Um, down third paragraph on the next page, if that's page three, uh, on the the highlighted motion, after the word choice in the middle of the second line, it needs a comma. And this, the, the way this reads, says motion to adopt resolution twenty-four dash nine to include all the wording through number three and to exclude the ballot question choice made by Ramon Reed.
Got it, thank you.
And this actually brings up something I'd like to suggest in the future is I would, when you start with motion to adopt, put the name there, who it's by, because there's a, a second one here that's kind of the same way. On the next page, the motion, third paragraph, motion to adopt, um, after the third sentence where it says, and renumbering completed made by trustee Reed, Ramon Reed. Put a comma there, that in the future, if you put the motion made by trustee Reed at the top, it makes it easier reading.
I can do that, thank you.
That's, that's it.
Thank you.
Got any marks on yours? Got any marks on yours, Jared?
Oh.
Ed, what about you?
Nope, I'm, I'm good on all three of them the way they are.
Okay. All right. At this time, then, I would entertain a motion to approve December fifth work session minutes, December eleventh special meeting minutes, and December sixteenth regular meeting.
This is This is Jara. And I so moved, this is Jara, and I so moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
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 Aye, thank you very much. Item one dash two, review treasures reported. And discuss and vote group two, January twenty twenty-five dispersal. Hello? Go ahead.
To the disbursements for seven dollars and sixty-four cents, that was for, um, it's something to take into state, it's, uh, very important, um.
Did you say twelve dollars?
No, it's seven dollars, it's sixty-three cents.
Okay.
It's unemployment. It's, it's something that students take for, they it's, it's not on your list, so that, that needs to be added. Um, in addition, I did have an email from trustee Reed earlier today noticing the absence of the monthly, um, accounts balances for the account in general. At this time of year, those are not finalized, the reason primarily is because you don't receive your final sales tax dispersment from twenty twenty-four until February. And that affects multiple accounts, so rather than put out a report that's incorrect and incomplete, I will turn that in next month. So for February's meeting, all of the final figures for twenty twenty-four will be prepared. So that's why we don't have account balances for the end of December twenty twenty-four at this time, because they're just not finalized yet.
You say February is when the sales tax dispersment is finally coming?
Yep, the fi- it's on a two-month delay, so this month we receive sales tax for November, next month, earlier in the month, we'll receive sales tax for December, but that will happen before our meeting, in enough time for me to finalize the, um, balance sheet, and so next month we'll have all the final, um, balances and everything like that from when you get.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the town pick and check detail list?
Hey, Mr. Mayor Protam, it's Ed.
Yes, please, go ahead.
All right, I, I don't, uh, the question I have, I guess, is more of a statement than a question on the check detail and the dispersments. But if I go back to the December sixteenth meeting, I requested that the building inspector submit a monthly invoice for building permits, and I didn't see any of the building permits on the January dispersments to pay the building inspector. And the reason for that was that at the end of last year, in twenty-four, in December, of the twenty-three building permits that were issued, eight of those permits weren't included in the reports uh, to the board of trustees on a monthly basis, nor were they provided to the zoning board of adjustments. And in our last meet, or in that meeting in December, we'd uncovered that there were three permits that Tom actually wasn't invoiced, he didn't invoice for. So I'd had to ask back in December if we could do that on a monthly basis to stay on top of it, so we can also stay on top of the, uh, building permit numbers as they're issued, so I just, I, I thought we would see a change there, and I don't see it.
Okay. All right, so then, that will have to be something that Sarah and I get together on. Um, frequently a permit comes through and the, uh, absolute final permit fee number um, is double-checked by our town clerk and then
Okay.
And so we'll have to get together on that and try and do a better job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
I'll move the people of the dispersments with the seven dollar and sixty-three cent addition if Sarah mentioned. Otherwise, that's submitted.
Thank you, Ramon. We have a
This is Ed, I'll second.
And Ed's gonna second it? So in favor of accepting the, uh, approving the January twenty-five dispersment, say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Mr. Mayor Projam?
Yes, ma'am.
Just as a matter of, of interest, I was looking, when I was looking through the profit and loss, loss budget, uh, a year ago, right now, our town sales tax was right at sixty-four thousand dollars. And this year, it's, as of now, it's right at ninety-six thousand dollars. So I knew it was more, but I, I mean, that's substantial.
Those aren't final numbers, um, that's not entirely correct. So at this time of last year, I had already moved some of the sales tax out of the sales tax account and into the streets account, so, um, the, the difference is not exactly what you see there, but next month, we should have final numbers, if you want to know exactly what that difference is, we can have that ready to report. Okay, thank you.
Okay, item one dash three, discuss with possible action. Approving of payments of, uh, one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars to Jesse Garrettson for prep work completed for the Candy National Memorial during, memorial during the summer of twenty-two, and five hundred dollars for dish work completed after resigning as commissioner in twenty-four. Um, so I spent quite a bit of my day, um, listening to town meetings and reading transcripts and reviewing some other things. And, uh, so I'm just gonna throw out some stuff here, this is just stuff, just facts. So in the ninth, October eleventh, twenty twenty-one town meeting, Ramon Reed asked what the park was going to cost the town. And Mayor Balt stated that the cost estimates would be needed before developing the park. Now, I don't know how that worked out. So, but any rate, no cost estimates or budget requests have been made to the town for financial participation in the development of the memorial. So that was twenty twenty-one. And we're gonna leap forward here to January nine, twenty twenty-three, which is what, two years ago? Basically. And a fifteen hundred dollar and well, anyway. A fifteen hundred dollar, fifteen hundred and fifty dollar payment request was made from Jerry, Jesse Garrison to prepare the Ninth Street Park area for the memorial. And the bill was questioned by the town clerk. Following statement here is that when permission was given, and this is, this is out of, uh, out of minutes, when permission was given to develop the area as a park, the board was told that no town funds were required. Continuing on, um, trustee Jar- Garrettson, this is still in the twenty-three January minutes, suggested that the memorial committee meet and discuss this, and possibly, uh, it might not even need to be addressed at the board. And also in that same meeting, uh, Jesse Garrettson stated that he thought that the donation of the gazebo, the donation was of the gazebo only, and that the town should cover the cost of the park. So this, that's kind of how this flowed in the mindsets that we had and the things that were going on, and the questions that were somewhat unresolved. Um, and so that just kind of floated out there with the possibility that it would not come to the board for some time, until it did come again. Um, so on November twenty-four, I got a short note from Jesse that said that he had visited with the board, that would be the, uh, memorial gazebo board, he had visited with them in the summer of twenty-four, and that they said the gazebo was to be of no cost to the town, and that they had paid for three loads of topsoil, and that Parks and Rec should pay for the landscaping and the safe walking area preparation. And so Jesse says, so I'm resubmitting twenty-three and a half hours. And an additional note from that, uh, same communication was that Sarah thought this tractor work was part of the Candy Nassau Memorial gazebo donation. So Jesse also included with his notes, uh, work done and time spent. Um, and I went through that several times. And, um, here and there, you, it is not totally obvious, um, where the time was spent. And, uh, I'll just give one example, and, and, but this is neither here nor there, this is just, uh, this is where we wound up with this request for payment from work done in twenty twenty-two. And, um, after all of this conversation and communication in, in, uh, twenty-three, why? Um, there were no more bills from Ninth Street, it, given to us by Jesse Garrettson, so something happened there in all this discussion. But, um, and, and so uh, in reading through the notes, and I'll just give a couple of examples, for example, on the first entry, which is six sixteen twenty-two, uh, Jesse tells us who was there for the work, and that they backfilled footers and that they spent two and a half hours with this tractor. Okay. So, you know, that's not totally delineated there, what went where. And then again, in the next day, um, did some soil work downstream and cleared glass, grass, and rocks from the gazebo, and got two hours of tractor work. And again, it's not two hours on the clearing of, and then, so I'm saying it's just a bit unclear. Um, a- anyway, wound up, uh, there were a few other things there. Um, like moving the big rocks from the gazebo, and then I suppose you took those up, and that's what you started building the wall with, so that's kind of a shift here to there. And so, um, it, it, it may be that the question of where was the work and how much and so forth is a valid question. This is not particularly about whether or not Jesse did work, Jesse did a lot of work. Um, this is more particularly directed as which part of this would fall under streets and which part of this was be a little more, um, freelance on the part of the gazebo. And as I noted earlier, um, this is not about whether or not a lot of work was done. Several of you were in on that and know how much work, know how much work was done. So, um, that's just kind of a run through on how we got there. And I wanted to, uh, close that one out with, after we kind of got through messing with that stuff, uh, Jesse kind of had it figured out in his head, and we didn't get any more bills for work on Ninth Street. Um, unless they were totally associated with streets, I suppose. And so, um, all of this kind of leads up to a question. Um, and this, this question kind of came up after Jesse resigned. And, uh, and that question is, how do we, what do we do? Do we accept and pay invoices from individuals to clean up bitches and brush and culverts because they see a problem and fix it? And, uh, I think that's probably explains a little bit about how we got here. Jesse's position that he thought it was the gazebo only and that the town should cover the rest of the park. And then, uh, yeah. And then after we kind of went round and round on that and seemed to get that cleared up, uh, this did not occur again. So, um, okay. So the question remains, um, to discuss approving payments of seventeen hundred and seventy-five dollars to Jesse Garrettson for work that he did on Ninth Street, and the five hundred dollars for ditch work completed after resigning as commissioner in twenty twenty-four, because Jesse did see problems and go fix them. Um, so, comments from the board?
I'm ready to make a comment. Team, that I have a question. Um, maybe Jesse, you know, is this amount for the park, the screen, or votes?
There's a few additions or corrections to Tom's statements, and yes, this bill is in the actual park area where after the ADA attends was brought to me, we extracted the rocks that were spinning up out of the soil, and they wound up being on the perimeter, so they didn't trip on them, and then the, uh, Memorial Gazebo Committee paid for the three loads of topsoil to threw this all out, fill in up to, on, down to Creek. And, uh, then also, the ditches work this summer after I've resigned was not, because I found a lot of them. It was because people came to me. And the very first one was at six thirty on a Sunday evening. And so I had to hold on one Sunday evening at six thirty, so I got my mower out and bought as close as I could, and then got my weed eater and tied it into it, and tread, our student came along about half done, and he finished helping me weed eat the ditch and make it run down the ditch. And then we cleaned it with our paths. And then the next one was, uh, was above Third Street, uh, below, below Armstrong. Same thing, the weeds, they neglected the ditch, the grass had grown tall, fallen into the ditch, therefore it makes a restriction, and it was flooding the two lot right downstream, uh, Armstrong. So that was part of my attention, so I mowed again, all I could on the street side, as I started to weed eater, Tom got by and saw what I was doing, so he went and got his son-in-law and a weed eater and a pitch worker rake, and he got back, Armstrong tied in. So on the four of us, got that cleaned up, and again, followed it down to, uh, Henry Cox, both of them were in spring to go out in, uh, Seven Acres. And then, uh, a gentleman, a few days or weeks later, I don't remember the time, I haven't written down, uh, across Uh across the street from Run Gilf Bay. Said when we were fixing to flood the uh Forest Service and Jim and Jane built the show. So I overlook, sure enough, got the same type of problem for all that Front Street stuff is at Run Gilf Bay on creek side of Maine. And so again, I mowed what I could up to it and then I weed eaten, weed eaten, weed eaten and. Michael Miller even coming out to make sure it was in. Those were three important things that I did after requesting people of town of of the disaster. Uh, that has no state covered. The thing I had noticed though that we did not even consider nine and a half hours that I spent in May. On streets before I resigned. So the, the request tonight is not in its entirety. And uh. I think Sarah should have these copies of these bills as I presented them. And I shared them with Tom there, hoping to get it done in the December. So all back to twenty-four where it needed to be. But uh, as uh the agenda shows it tonight. I don't see any way you can pay it tonight, but I think you ought to act on it. And fulfill the town's obligations to the. Previous commissioner and then the emergency work I did and then the fulfillment for ADA, that the gazebo, the other questions.
I agree. I have a question. So the, the ditch thing, emergency ditch. The re, you're asking for reimbursement for your hours of working that you always volunteer for?
The thing that I did with my own because nothing was done, but the street equipment was functional. This whole summer, we did not have one weed eater lawn for anything maintenance. Zero was prepared for ditches this summer.
So that.
Lack of ditch commission.
So that was, so you're asking reimbursement for what?
My time, my equipment.
And what equipment was that?
Lawnmower and weed.
What lawnmower? You got several.
That's all.
Oh, the, the riding.
Yes.
Bigger lawnmower.
Yes.
Um. And I guess I wasn't really clear. I guess the reason for my question. I would like to, and. I don't care if, if you do it tonight or give the information to Sarah. Um, and when the, when the mayor's ready, I'll make a motion to approve this. But I want to know how much. Of it is for the park, how much of it is for the street work and how much of it is for ditch work? Because I want those amounts in the budget. Last year's budget and expenses to show. In the correct area that, that it went for.
Yes, I have that split out.
Okay.
I have three different. Streets, ditches and the uh recs apart.
Okay, do you have that?
I do have that. I'm gonna need some clarification from the board specifically for this parks thing because um we don't have. Parks funds to do this with. Um, this, this money was requested from Parks and Rec without speaking to any Parks and Rec. People about whether they had budget for that, so we're gonna have to figure out where you'd like to pull that money from.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and we'll make a budget amendment probably at the next meeting to be able to. Cover this expense and then also cover the end expenses that our Parks and Rec Commissioner has been issued.
Officially been declared as a park from Fort Lane to the creek on Ninth.
Say that again, Jesse.
As the area from Fort Lane on Ninth Street to the creek, been officially declared as a park.
I believe so.
I, I know Sarah and Sarah requested that be delegated as a park.
This was before I got on the board, but I recall the, the board. Adopting a motion to.
However, it needs to be handled, it's fine with me, but I, I'm not trying to hookwink anybody or anything, uh. This sounds. Kind of sad, but. Our town has received about a hundred thousand dollar donation. In that gazebo and the. Soil and the, all the work that's been done right down to the fence. Uh. I think we as a town will be quite appreciative and it will probably last on any other building in town unless it's a stone building like the hotel. Uh. Take care of it however you want to. Thank you. Unless you have more questions.
Item.
Well, I, I have one other question for Sarah on the. The parks about. Can, can that come from the? I forget the name of it, basically the.
No, we can't do that because this bill is two and a half years old and CTS is extremely strict on how we account. Um, for, for those funds, so that's not an option.
So since they're two and a half years old, our option has been out.
Pull money out of the general fund.
Pull it out of the general.
We can take care of that next month.
It's asking.
You got your hand up there, Ed. Go.
Yep, I just, I just have a couple of comments uh before we. Go any further on it. I, I looked at, at this bill as two different bills. Uh, I'm gonna start with the ditch work. For what Jesse did, what he explained in taking care of the ditches. And I'll just say as a citizen, not as a previous street commissioner, ditch commissioner. But as a citizen, because he wasn't a street commissioner, ditch commissioner at the time. He was called upon by some of our folks in town where ditches were overflowing. And I looked at it as if it was any other citizen in town that jumped on their tractor, on their weed eater, on their mower. And got after taking care of the ditches so they weren't running over the streets. Five hundred dollars is a cheap amount. Because if we start washing out the streets, we're gonna spend a whole lot more money than five hundred dollars. To, to take care of, of water flow and other ditch over the streets. So to me, I, I hate to use this term, but to me, it's a no-brainer. I don't care who it is, who it is in town, if they jump out and take care of it and they present us with a bill. When we don't have a street commissioner or ditch commissioner, then we gotta step up to the plate. The second part of the bill that I see. Uh, with the eleven seventy-five, I know that Jesse did considerable work on the Ninth Street going up to the. The gazebo, he did some work on Court's Lane, of which I don't think we were ever billed separately for that. But when I, I look at what the town has received for the town people to use in that gazebo. And no charge to the town. That bill is a no-brainer in my opinion. I mean, I, it's. I, I really can't believe we're debating about it. I can't believe it was even debated about in January of twenty-three. But that's just my opinion on both of them right now.
Thank you, Ed. So I'm, I'm gonna take it that you're lined up with uh. Ramon Reed here on, on fulfilling this financial bill.
I agree. I think so.
Chris Nassau, I see you've stepped up to the plate.
Yes. Here's just gonna take care of that, but. Sarah, just make a comment. I'd be curious, are you saying there's not? Any money in parks and rec fund?
I can't, I can't budget it for other uses. For Parks and Rec. Fully, fully budgeted for other uses. There is money, but we're getting mulch, we're having some playground repairs.
Can I ask those uses a secret? I mean, I don't remember there ever being a conversation here about.
Yeah, it's been in the um commissioner's report, so if you want to go back and review the December of twenty twenty-four commissioner's report, Josh Ackerman outlined what he. No, not at that time. I mean, he, he turned in a budget request with his list. The board approved budget for the amount that he was requesting, so I guess, yeah, that.
I guess I just misunderstood. I thought you were indicating the budget. And I'm a, a summer here fundraiser and I thank you to him about thirty thousand dollars. So I know there's money there. It's all to look at that.
Yeah, thank you. Well, Sarah has indicated that this probably come out of general fund. Yes? Yeah.
What, what we're gonna have to do is we're, we'll pay out Parks and Rec, um if, if the board goes and approves this, I'll go ahead and I'll, I can write the check. And get it sent off this month, so the justice doesn't have to continue waiting. And next month, because Mr. Ackerman's not gonna spend money until probably May, we'll just make a budget amendment and we'll refill. The Parks and Rec budget to the amount that he needs in order to make playground repairs and, and replace the holes in the playground.
Okay. Any other public comments?
So the ditch, or the reimbursement or whatever it is for the ditch will come out of the ditch, come out of the ditch. And, and the street thing will come out of it.
Right, so we, we have it divided out, um. The streets and the ditches, because those just occurred in twenty twenty-four. We can still pay those this month and. Take them out of the twenty twenty-four budget, which is another reason that I didn't turn in a balance sheet tonight because I wasn't sure what the board was gonna do with this and it's gonna change. The final numbers for the twenty twenty-four budget, but we, there is, there are funds in the twenty twenty-four budget for, for this. Thank you.
So is, totally wrote down as sixteen seventy-five, is that correct?
Uh, say that a little louder, Ramon, so everybody hear you.
The total I wrote down when you. Said that the funds at the start was sixteen hundred and seventy-five dollars. Is that the correct total?
No, it comes to twenty-one fifty. So what we have, so there, four seventy-five, um we have some streets. Uh tractor hours from prior to Jesse's resignation. There was not a question about those. But rather than write two checks, I was gonna wait to see what you did tonight and then. Either pay it next month or we can just pay it tonight. So I'm gonna put it all in one check. So that's not under question because he was still street commissioner and had the authority to hire himself to do this job. The ones that were questioned were ones after he resigned and. Just did work and then turned in a bill. And so that would be the five hundred vision and then also work that he did, the car thing was not asked to do. So those were under question. Um, the four seventy-five for streets work while he was still street commissioner, that, that's okay. But the total is twenty-one fifty.
Twenty-one fifty?
Correct, so we've got one thousand one hundred and seventy-five plus nine seventy-five.
I didn't get the four seventy-five. Okay, I will make a motion. To approve payment to Jesse Garrettson of two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. With the accounting end of it, there's first. Disbursement amongst the funds. To be taken care of by the clerk and presented to us at our next meeting.
This is Ed. This is Ed. I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. For the amount of two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars payable to Jesse Garrettson. For his. Expertise and willingness and um.
And machines.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
I'm looking to give you some uh more input. January fifth of twenty-three was the first time that tractor hours on the park was turned in. So.
January twenty-three.
Yes, January fifth of twenty-three.
Right.
Because we didn't turn it in first. Thank you.
Just a clarification in my motion. I'd like all of it charged into, into the twenty-four budget.
It's gonna have to be twenty-three long, what is that?
No, we don't.
We can't open that back up.
We don't wanna go there.
That, that was the intention, so this will all be accounted for in twenty twenty-four.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you also very much. Uh, item, item. Uh, one dash four is to discuss with possible action. Adopting Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one for the regular meeting date. This is House.
This is housekeeping, it's the same last year with an updated date on.
Yeah, this is the, the third Monday or Tuesday.
Um, third Monday or Tuesday, the only other minor change I made is I actually took the word time out because. Didn't actually set the time in the, and we never have, so I just changed the time.
We could float that just a bit if we wanted to do the time.
Right, so if the board ever needed to hold the meeting earlier, it's free to do so, but by setting the date as you put it, my hair or two, maybe one, I'm pretty consistent.
Okay.
I have some suggested changes in the wording. Not to change. Their intent at all. Um, let's all just to make it consistent with the next motion. Uh. Would you put Town of Pittkin at the very top?
Yeah.
The same as the resolution.
I have to do that on this computer, so I'm taking notes. Is it in the title?
Yeah, and then on the. The second line, what will be the second line then first now, it starts with N, resolution should be A, resolution. Or just, the other one doesn't have, even have the word A, just says resolution.
Okay.
Either way, but I just, I think these two, because they really go together a lot.
Yes.
Um, they should be consistent.
Okay.
And then in. Paragraph number five.
Resolution, okay.
Uh, yeah, resolution one. I would. Change the, change the wording as follows. The, the start of it is correct, the date, time and place for each meeting shall be posted. But from there, I'd scratch the rest of. Or most of that sentence and say, at the official posting locations. For the Town of Pittkin.
At the official posting locations for the Town of Pittkin?
Yes. Which is about to be done in the next motion, in the next resolution. And then scratch after Colorado. Just delete the website and Town of Pittkin Post Office, et cetera. But leave the end of it saying at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting.
Okay.
Is that clear?
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
So was that res, our resolution on posting?
That was the resolution on the regular meeting day.
Oh, okay. I got, I got them switched on my.
No. If the, the second resolution is this, the official posting places, which includes the website. And I'm just changing this, so it'll essentially cite that second resolution rather than. There's something that could change.
That sound good to you, Sarah?
Yes.
Well, okay, we've already banged into both of them, but we'll start with number. One, resolution on posting locations. Ed, do you have any comment on this before we? Entertain a motion?
I don't have a comment on it, but I'll make a motion.
Oh, well, please do.
I move that we adopt resolution number one, series twenty twenty-five. Resolution for setting the date and time of regular meetings of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Pittkin. Uh, with changes. I don't know if we want to put the changes that Ramon brought forward or say again?
As amended then.
Okay, as amended. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion.
I I have.
Then Jared beat you to it. We have a motion in a second. Oh, we have an item of discussion. Okay, go ahead, Ramon.
I'm not asking for any changes in this, but what I would like, because this does have and number four says the day of the regular meeting. Three basically says it can be a Monday or Tuesday. The third one of the month. The day five says the day of the regular meeting shall be determined be determined by the mayor of the town of Pittkin. And I'm fine with that, and I want to make the suggestion and I I understand that some of this will involve more than just the mayor, because the clerk has other obligations and whatnot too, but my suggestion would be when the month, third Monday of the month is a holiday such as tonight, that you schedule the meeting on Tuesday rather than on the holiday if possible. And I don't know if that will work with the clerk as well, but I I would rather, I would prefer that we not meet on the holidays.
How do we, how do we do this?
As.
We've already got a motion.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting changing the
But I think, yeah, I think going forward, if if a meeting coming up and it falls on a holiday, it just just bring it up.
We we have the option to move it, if somebody will just remember.
Right. So we just have to remember. That's that's the the thing.
Okay. This is my suggestion and my preference.
Okay, I think it's a good a good plan.
I think by history, that's how we've been doing it for many years. Sounds good to me.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of adopting our potion posting location resolution, say aye.
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 Yeah.
And motion carries. And then item similar to that.
Tom, I think you might have
I printed the same thing twice.
Yeah, I think you might have misstated that, Tom.
I did what?
You might have misstated what we were voting on.
Okay, let's get it right then.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're actually voting on the regular meeting date is what we voted on.
Yes.
Now, now we can mo- move to the
Right, so let's back up and clarify. We have a motion to accept the resolution regarding our regular meeting dates. It is seconded. And all are in favor, so let's vote one more time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I want to apologize. I printed the same thing twice. I don't have. Thank you, Ramon.
That's the one. Which one did you, don't you have?
Yeah. This is the one I've got.
Okay. This is one that we passed.
All right, this one is for posting locations.
I don't I don't have any changes on number two.
So we've we've been happy with the uh posting locations. We have the bulletin board in the post office. And uh anybody can walk in there twenty four hours a day and uh notice is supposed to be up twenty four hours ahead of schedule. Do we have that on here?
It it's in the sunshine law.
Okay.
I do think it's here, but it doesn't have to be.
All right.
It's Colorado statute.
And then we also have the website. So if nobody has any problems, everybody happy out there? Everybody happy here? I would entertain a motion.
I'll move adopt kind of resolution number two, series twenty twenty five.
This is Jared. I second you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Ed. All right. Okay, item one six, discuss with possible action setting a date for public hearing for zoning change request. Sir, what's the soonest we can pull this business off?
Uh, we could do it next month at the February meeting.
Really? Next month at the February meeting?
There is a posting requirement and we need to need to go in. I'll have to double check, but I think we have time. Let me verify what the posting requirement is.
Yeah, so this is a public hearing on a zoning change request over on uh
So yeah, so there are notification requirements. Um, I know we post because it's a public hearing, and I am historically be also notify neighbors, adjacent property owners. Please take just a moment.
Okay, we'll we'll wait.
This computer is um really trying to die.
Sounds like it's being a bomb movie. Trying to die.
Sarah, is that your new computer?
Yeah. No, this is the old one, but I I need the old one, because the new one is used for Zoom, and I don't want everybody just looking at me during Zoom, so. I worry for when this one dies, and I can turn and use the computer at the same time.
I was gonna say, if that was your new computer, you're hard on harder on him than I am.
So this thing has lasted almost nine years, so.
Wow.
Be good for a Windows computer.
Got your money out of that one.
Yeah. Fifteen. Fifteen calendar days. I think it was in a newspaper. So that was just at least fifteen days, so we'll get that done, and then I would imagine notifying a bit more timeframe, so we'll get that done uh, this week, and that should give us plenty of time to have provided notice to everybody who may want to weigh in on the public hearing.
Okay, so the date is then the next public meeting, which, I mean, the next Pittkin Town meeting, which is February what?
Well, so actually that comes up later. I'm not gonna be here on the third Monday, so I'm requesting that it is the third Tuesday.
The third Tuesday, look at there. I believe we can do that.
So.
Can everybody make it Tuesday? No?
I'm no, I have, I have to go back to Mayo Clinic, and I won't be here. I can't be here, but I don't think I can be here on
On a Monday.
Let me look. Because I have to. I it would be squeezing me, and I could try to, if we have it on Monday, I could try to stay. It's not gonna work well here. So, and I won't, but I absolutely can't be here on Tuesday.
Okay.
So, but I, and I don't think I can Zoom.
That experience has been very bad.
It it is, and so I think I'm, I'm sure try, but I wouldn't count on me at all for February. Yeah. But I'm not opposed.
I guess that's just the way it is.
Yes, I'm not opposed to studying in a day.
Okay.
So are we we talking February seventeenth or eighteenth?
The seventeenth is not an option.
Right.
I have to, so the eighteenth.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I was on the right week.
All right. So do we need to discuss this some more, or are we all happy with the public hearing on February eighteenth?
Okay.
Um. Okay, need a motion for that date, I think.
All right.
This is Ed. If you're ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move that we set the date for the public hearing for the zoning change request for the train depot, and I don't remember the address, six oh one, I think. State Street. And more than just State Street, it's actually not just for the train depot. If we go off the recommendation from the zoning board.
So, um, the town only received a packet for a zone change request for six oh one state, so that's the one that's going forward. If the zoning board wants to petition the town to make a zoning change request, it would have to go through the same process and turn in that paperwork packet. That's according to the zoning code. Do you want to finish your motion for Jake's request?
Yeah, I'm a little bit irritated, because the zoning board request was all the way from Sixth Street to Ninth Street on the mountainside of State Street.
Yeah, so the zoning board made a recommendation, but Jake is the only person who has officially heard the zoning code requirements, made an official petition for zoning change. So at this time, that's what can be reviewed by the Board of Trustees. If the if the zoning board wants the petition for a change in zoning, um, the packet is also still required according to the zoning code. So there's there's only one official request on the table. If if you look at your zoning code, you can you can see that the zoning board can initiate a request, and then it follows up with the requirements of that request. So if the zoning board wants to do that, it can, but it has not at this point, and the board wants to go ahead and move forward, it sounds like, and knock it off Jake's request.
Uh, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna request, and we move on Jake's request.
So do you wanna motion for just six oh one State Street, because that's the only completed request that the town has at this time?
Well, it has to be six oh one State Street, because you're telling, you're saying we can't do one for the the recommendation by the zoning board.
That's correct.
So.
But was it my understanding the the zoning board did recommend six oh one be included?
Yes, that's correct. They did recommend that, and now come up at the public hearing again, the recommendation um from the zoning board to rezone six oh one State Street will be again presented to the Board of Trustees.
So the public hearing can can be on the agenda of the next board meeting, and then it could, if after the public hearing, it will also be on the agenda for the board to approve? We're having the public hearing.
Right.
A small meeting.
If it, the board agrees tonight, yeah, you're setting a date for public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's.
It could, um, the board could put it on there, or based on the information right of your board could request more information, but it can be on the agenda, and then the board can decide if it is ready to make a decision or more information is required.
Yeah.
But yeah, the plan is to put everything on the agenda, and then depending on how the public hearing goes, um, it'll go one way or the other.
Yeah, that was my question. Thanks. So is there's motion on the table, is that right?
I
At least so.
Okay, has got a motion for, what is that, six oh one?
Six oh one State Street.
This is Jared, and I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for hearing on February eighteen. There's only change request, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, we're in business. Item one dash seven, Jesse James. Jesse James. Discuss with possible action appointing Jesse Garrettson as, you poor guy, street commissioner and district commissioner through March twenty six. Any discussion from the front? Any discussion from Mr. Pinalta?
No, I'm, I'm don't have any more to say on it. Do you want to open up to the public?
I'm getting ready to.
Okay, do that.
Okay. Any public discussion or opinions on appointing Jesse Garrettson as street commissioner and district commissioner through March twenty twenty six? Yeah, here, you can have mine. Or not.
Well, uh, this could be considered biased, because Jesse is about to be my nothing in law.
Is he really?
Yes. I wanna take everyone back and remind the, um I mean, I haven't been here as long as any of the rest of you. Been here less than any of you, so, but what I've always witnessed is how the town, the town came together and worked together to be proactive and and keep the town functioning smoothly, uh, for the most part. And, um a few years ago, the town did the Miss Mary Bay with, uh, working some of the ditches through primarily, it was mostly volunteer work. There were some invoices that came in for equipment that was used Chad, Arnel, and myself. The fees were very minimal. And it irritated some people in the town, maybe some of the trustees, that they had to pay myself and Chad, Arnel for our equipment. And so you put it out for bid. And you learned that you paid double for a foot than what you did when Chad, Arnel, and I did it. And I think the fact that this has been argued over for, it's not that almost two years, this is how it's been discussed. Unlike anyone in this room, if you have the goodness to do it, to raise your hand, if you think Jesse James ever had any ill intention towards it or tried to take advantage of anyone in this town for for self gain. And you can't honestly raise your hand. And the fact that this is even a concern that we've had to struggle is kind of sad for the town of Pittkin. So I hope we can come back to where we used to be, where we actually appreciated the time that and to making the town better. And yeah, maybe some fees involved, and I think Jesse's gonna work um, more diligently on providing more detailed paperwork. But at at the end But at, at the end of the day, never did he take advantage of the town of Pitt County. And I think that's critical for everyone to see. And when this vote comes to a vote, I would like to see each person's campaign so, out everyone voting, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schellenberg. Anyone else?
I'm ready to make motion if you, or unless you want to wait until somebody gets up and gripes or something.
Um.
And, and that somebody could be me.
You can.
If it was me, I wouldn't be up for street and ditch commissioner.
All right.
But I'm not that person. So would you like?
I would entertain, since we have no more discussion here it appears and no more up here, I would entertain a motion regarding this. Appointing Jesse Garrettson as street commissioner and ditch commissioner through March of twenty sixth. Which is just a little over here.
So this is Ed. I don't know if Jer made the motion. If she hasn't, I will make the motion.
Oh, I, I didn't.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we appoint Jesse Garrettson as the street commissioner and the ditch commissioner until March twenty sixth.
All right. Thank you, Ed. We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. To appoint Jesse Garrettson as street commissioner through March of twenty six. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, Jesse James, you got yourself a job, buddy.
I'll work with you.
We're gonna do that. We're gonna do that. All right, we've got some upcoming work sessions we need to schedule and one of them is an OWTS ordinance. What is that? Is that transfer on title business or what?
So currently the ordinance requires an inspection every seven years. It's been recommended to move to transfer title, which is what the county does. In order to do that, the OWTS ordinance would need to be opened up, sent to the state.
A portion rewritten and sent to the state.
We need to rewrite the ordinance so that we can send it to the state for approval. And that probably would best happen in a work session.
Yeah, so I don't know what your guys' schedule is for, uh, work sessions. But that's one of the things we need to do. Of course, enforcement, I'm sorry, enforcement and the municipal court remains hanging over our head, especially as times progress and we become more and more affluent and attractive to the rest of the world out there. And then the other thing that has been brought up is regarding business licenses. And so, um, how many of these you think we can squeeze into a work session? Two?
I. You know, the, the OWTS ordinance should not be overly complicated. It's really just changing when the inspections occur. That's the primary reason for opening that backup. Um, I am unclear on what it would take to muddle through enforcement of business licenses. So it may be that those would be their own. Um.
Okay.
That OWTS ordinance might just be a short one.
All right. Well, let's schedule a work session for something. How's everybody? Jer, how's your life?
Well, as soon as I can get my thing over in February is good and until then, I'm.
So sometime after February.
No, I'm saying I'm pretty much good until then.
Oh, until.
And then after. But to tell you the truth, I've, how many times do we have to muddle through enforcement, municipal court and business licenses in the last, what?
Well, we haven't hit business licenses in quite a while.
I know, but we've muddled about it. And there's been a lot of discussion and meetings for several times in the last, I don't know.
I don't recall that.
Ten, fifteen years, many.
Yeah.
Lots.
Your memory's longer than mine, perhaps.
Yes. Oh, and I'm sure Ramon can remember better than I do. Many times we've discussed those.
All right.
I'm not saying we can't again, but.
Well, we need to keep moving forward with the town business.
Well, if the, the OWTS ordinance should be fairly straightforward, do you want to just put some momentum and schedule a work session? Get that done? Might even be able to get it on the next agenda? If the board wants to do a work session prior to February eighteenth?
I will. Ramon says he's capable. Work session prior to February eighteenth? Jer, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I think it should work.
Sarah, how's your schedule looking?
Um, I am free the week of February the ninth. I've got that weekend out. And there's medical issues, my family, and then I'm going out of town.
So you say we gotta do this before February nine?
Yes, please. So next week is open, the first week of February is open.
Okay, what do you guys think? First week of February, pick a day? Any day better than another?
I think, I think any day is, probably not Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Thursday?
The sixth.
Thursday, the first week of February? What, what is the date on that?
February sixth.
Six.
And what time do you want to do this? Can we do a six thirty?
Thirty. Six.
On the six, S I X. We've got us a work session scheduled. As far as I know, we don't have any special additions to the agenda. Except it looks like we have, uh, our new street commissioner would like to address us.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Pro Jim has to unite his conversation prior to the meeting tonight. We still have an issue to take care of on Billy's civic work that he did in town Pitt County.
We still have what? Additions?
Responsibility to, to report to the court system in behalf of his civic, what do you call that?
I'm not sure. This is, this is something that.
Okay, the court said that Billy, in order to.
Oh.
Get this thing straight.
You're, you're, um, sponsor, you sponsored, uh, commission some community service?
Yeah, community service, that's the word I'm looking for. Yes, and you told me this afternoon, you mean that we should want to get that taken care of?
Well, you, yeah, you know, I'm sure he's anxious.
So, uh, well, maybe his judge or parole officer or whatever.
Oh, you know, uh, they'll take it when they can get it.
Somebody's in. So, uh, a- as we spoke earlier, we definitely want to get this taken care of. We might want somebody else to help us someday.
Uh, so where are you going with this?
I submitted the information to Sarah, I don't remember, two, three months ago. And she said she'd look into it.
And.
And then as we left for Rochester, she texted me and said, if I would put it together and give it to her, she put it on a letterhead for the town of Pitt.
Right, okay.
And I'm back now, but I gave you all my information from her, so I don't have them.
Oh, you don't have it? Okay.
So I did email you, cause I, I knew you were out of town, so I scanned all those paperwork in and I emailed that to you. So you have had that in your email.
Maybe I'm not far enough to find my email.
Well, I'll get that.
So I'm going to give you a copy, Officer Hart, copy, then, please.
I'm happy to return your hard copies. I do not need them. I will get those to you this week.
Yeah, so.
And then put it together and.
Yeah, well, so I've not personally, uh, years ago, I was in foster care and I, I had lots of acquaintances who were in foster care who had kids that wound up in community service. That happens to teenagers right regularly. And, um, and so the, the foster parent would apply to whomever and they would wind up cleaning, you know, two miles of highway from each or something. And then the foster parent would file a report that this had happened and this is done and this is how many hours they did. And, and this is what they accomplished and, and, and then they would submit that to the, uh, uh, the parole officer or the court liaison or the judge or whoever's in charge. And, and, um, and that would take care of it. So as a sponsor, it's kind of your responsibility to sign your name to that thing. Basically, and say, this, we got some work out of this guy. Cause it sounded to me like you got some work out of this guy.
Yes, and somewhat coffee, like, let's get used to doing on ditches with, uh, inmates that take away into Pitt County and work on ditches. So, uh, again, it's like we said before, all of them are working. And we just need to accommodate the guy that needs some time and I'll, I'll be getting a clean record done, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other town business? Anybody have anything they've got to say?
Hey, Tom, Tom, Tom?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, I mean, yeah.
I'm gonna back up just a second. Uh, I want to go back to that work session on February sixth, Thursday.
Oh, okay.
That is, did we decide that's for the OWTS?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think so.
So one other question to be thinking forward, uh, we need to keep in mind that we did receive the letter from our EHA that she was resigning effective April first. And do we want to post that position? I understand if, if maybe if, if we move forward with the, uh, OWTS inspections upon uh, ti- transfer of title, she may want to stay. But if we get into February and we decide differently, she may not want to stay. But as to Ramon's, uh, point last month, those jobs have to be posted at the post office before we can select somebody. And I don't know that we want to go without an EHA. So we may want to get it posted and, and see where it goes.
Yeah, I don't.
How, how would the board like me to work that? Just as a potential opening beginning in April?
What do you think, Ed?
Well, I, I think it just needs to be posted as an opening April first. And if Gail, if she wants to do it, then she puts it against. It may be.
Go ahead, I didn't mean to.
But I was gonna say, it may be very much like our street and ditch commissioner where we don't have anybody else that posts for it. And, and she's the only one that maybe has had the training at the point. I don't know. I just don't want to get to April first and she does decide she doesn't want to do it because uh, we haven't adopted this, uh, transfer, inspection on transfer on title.
Right.
So.
I see your point. Okay. So are we good with posting that? Any other business? You know, I could comment on that just a little bit. I will tell you that, uh, keeping track uh, with that spreadsheet that she's got of all of the upcoming. Uh, so I think she said this year's the thirty five or thirty six letters she's got to send out.
Oh.
Some years, there's more than that. And then all the returns and all of the other stuff and, um, you'll think this is weird, but she, um, she and I went to, um, NAWT North, but wastewater treatment technicians or whatever it is. And she became not certified for inspections and then she went back and did it again and became not certified in installation. And she really likes that part of it. She doesn't like keeping track and sending out letters. So we only do a couple of OWTS up here a year, two, three, four max. And so that's not real time consuming, whereas the rest of the stuff is, so that's probably the why and where for things. I couldn't say for sure because she speaks for herself almost always.
I would like, Gaila, and encouragement, if we get this seven-year deal adopted, which is half the responsibility of that letter writing and stuff, that she might consider staying on. Very qualified for. So, uh, let's encourage her. I know she had some thoughts back there when she turned in that letter, but, uh, I, I would encourage us to get after that seven-year deal and maybe it might help encourage her. Thank you.
Okay.
I would ask on that, if Sarah, you could contact the county and ask for their language. They have the language in the, the county. Environmental.
Right, they do.
Do exactly what Gaila, or, yeah, has proposed. And so if we can get that language, that might be.
Do you know who, who is in charge of that, by any chance?
Yeah, Crystal Lambert? No, it would be Rebecca. I think so. I think that's her name. It's changed. Things change.
Okay.
Well, Crystal could direct you to the right place, but I, I think the lady, check with Gaila, she knows. She talks to her all the time.
Suzie has her hand up.
Suzie, do, do you have your hand up?
I do. Can you hear me? Can, can you hear me or not?
Yes, ma'am. Please go ahead.
Um, I would say, um, that I didn't mind doing the letters that Gaila's been doing. I didn't mind keeping track of those records. If you, that I used to do that for many years. I don't know how many years, but, um, then Gaila's, you know, I was like ready to not do it anymore, but if I don't have a whole lot of other stuff going on anymore, so if, um, you would want me to take that back, um, I could do that. The environmental health agent part.
There's a idea split this job and let somebody do the paperwork and somebody do the other work.
Yeah, I don't want to be inspecting. I don't know if that's part of it. I, I would do the.
No, ma'am, we, we can break this up so that you're in charge of the spreadsheet, the paperwork and, and the mailing out of letters and to keep track of what comes back and, and who's been pumped and all that stuff. Yeah.
Okay. Well, so.
Well, there's a thought.
Yep, that's.
Let's see what turns up on this seven-year thing and then Suzie, we may be tapping on you, your shoulder to see if you're still available.
Yep. Yep, okay, okay. I'll be here. All right, thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Tom, let's make a note of that for the workshop. If we, if we do the seven-year deal and then who might, how we might split that up if that's a possibility.
Thank you, Ed.
I can make the amendment simple. Because I can make the amendment simple. Just add an S on the end of environmental health agent. That's right, yeah. We'll get there, one way or another.
All right, is there any other business? Jer, anything else? Ramon, Ed, you got anything else?
Nope.
Everybody happy? Everybody had enough? Time to go home? Okay then, thank you so very much for your attendance. This meeting is adjourned.